First, I want to welcome my council colleagues, Council Walsh, Council Allen, Council President Williams, Council Govan. Thank you for joining us. Hi Commissioner, hi Chris Mary and Talia. Hi City Council team, I know that's you back there focused Springfield.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi Beth.
So we'll go ahead and get started. It is 5:06 and we will start. This is actually my first race and civil rights subcommittee meeting. So glad to have you special guest Chris Mary and Talia. I just wanted to call to meet together so we could just hear all the wonderful things that you're doing in the city of Springfield and ask you some questions that we might have. So that's all it's for, just to get an update. So whichever one wants to start, unless Ms. Allen wants to say a couple of words. You're muted Ms. Allen.
I am on mute. Hey, how's everybody? It is exciting to be living on a Wednesday, isn't it? So that is the blessing. We are all here. So thank you very much for calling this meeting, City Councilor Whitfield, and thank you for your work as well to everyone on the call. I wanted to just, Chris Mary has a short PowerPoint to share. I'm wondering if that's okay with the process?
Or?
Okay, so I wanted to first of all, say how impressive it has been working with Chris Mary. And I know that there has been some concern around her not immediately. She immediately started the work, but got a bit derailed because of COVID. Chris Mary is one of the Spanish speakers in our department. And as we started to do contact tracing, she became critical to the operations of us moving forward. And so I'm grateful to her for sliding into supporting the entire department as we face that COVID-19 challenge. So Chris Mary, I'm going to hand this over to you. And I know that you have a PowerPoint that you're going to share. And it is brief, so we will not be long. But we want to just talk about the amazing work that has been done. Chris Mary, are you ready to share?
I think I gave you share screen abilities, Chris Mary. Let me know.
Thank you. I've been talking to myself this whole time.
All right, we all do that.
I do it on purpose.
Okay, honey, you got the floor.
Okay, so good afternoon. I want to thank my Commissioner for her support in my role and to the Civil Rights Subcommittee of the City Council for inviting me here today. For those of you who I have not had the pleasure of meeting yet, my name is Chris Mary Gonzalez. I use she/her/hers pronouns. And I oversee the Office of Health and Racial Equity. This is just the overview of the conversation that we were having today. For shared understanding, I just wanted to include that. The Commissioner briefly touched upon the beginnings of the Office. I do want to add our Office goals and objectives, which are to learn about problems residents are facing and explore the effects of institutionalized racism specifically on health, strategize solutions together between our community and the Office, and to have our work inform the policies. The Office of Health and Racial Equity focuses on building equitable communities by assessing and promoting best practices that foster healing from social injustice, trauma, and oppression. Because of our commitment to achieving health equity, we operate under the four pillars of transparency, communication, commitment to learn, and relationship building, which are vital in recognizing that an equitable Springfield is a healthier Springfield. This leads us to center community, especially as it relates to language. In one of our community dialogues, we introduced the following definitions to create a shared understanding. These two definitions are in part with state and national entities, and they were accepted as is by residents.
Chris Mary, do me a favor and read those because I think people have a challenge around what is health equity and what is racial equity. And I think that the distinction is important to share.
Thank you Commissioner. So in health equity, everyone has a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible. It requires moving obstacles to health such as poverty, discrimination, and their consequences, including powerlessness. This definition comes specifically out of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. Racial equity are those conditions that would be achieved if once racial identity no longer predicted how one prospers or reaches full potential. I also wanted to include, I love this image. This is out of the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, and it provides a visual depicting the differences between equality and equity. Often, we believe that equality is key, but the truth is that people have specific needs and we need to identify these and find solutions together in community for everyone to reach their best health potential. Some successes this Office has had fit into these three buckets. In order to increase Office capacity, I've had the pleasure of participating in the Host Community Agreement meetings, where I was able to inquire about organizations' diversity plans and how they have people of color at every level of the organization. I've been able to inquire about future or current hiring practices, specifically to individuals that have been disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, and offered to be a sounding board in matters related to health and racial equity. The Healing Racism Institute of Pioneer Valley Training, I have undergone the majority of the trainings and will be undergoing the facilitators training in the future. This will equip me with better facilitation skills that will be useful as I continue this work and can implement both externally and internally if the opportunity presents itself. I have compiled a compilation of resources that will be housed in the Office description at the page of the Springfield Department of Health and Human Services website. We are currently revising our page and will be making necessary changes, but this information will all pilot once all aspects of our website is complete. Additionally, I am fortunate to serve as a member of the Continuum of Care Board, where I bring health and racial equity perspectives as they relate to root causes of homelessness and find ways we can address this matter. The Pursuit of Project Collaboration is one that is right now between the UMass Medical School and specifically my office. It did start with the onboarding of an intern, Ms. Cassandra Jean Marie. This project recognizes that Springfield, Massachusetts is a conglomeration of different races and ethnicity that shaped the city and make it distinct. Our neighborhoods collaborate to create a community that contains various cultures and traditions. The objective of this project is to embark on a comprehensive analysis of a subset of Springfield neighborhoods. This project can be an educational tool for future medical professionals, some of which will end up in Springfield serving our residents. Or it can be used for others that are hoping to serve the community in Springfield. This project will be broken into three phases that students in the PURGE program can participate if the future permits and build upon. Phase one is to create an overview of Springfield. Phase two is specifically to help disparities, right? So that's where we ask, what does an equitable Springfield look like? And phase three is exploring the impact of the infrastructure of Springfield, which will generate a mapping tool of resources and community champions that makes the city great. I've also been able to participate and bring a public health and health equity lens to the Community Block Development Grant. I will talk a little bit more about the community engagement piece in the next couple of slides. I will say that there is an effort that is ongoing where I am looking to collaborate with neighborhood councils and civic associations to host community dialogues, which I have called Bridging the Division. My Commissioner has been amazing in just being an extension of the Office and meeting with Brother Johnny to discuss some of the outreach work that the mission has been doing. This next piece I'm extremely excited about. We have been able to gain a membership into GEAR, which stands for the Government Alliance for Racial Equity. This membership allows us to connect with other individuals across the state and the nation that hold similar positions to mine. It provides me access to resources and materials that can better inform my work in Springfield and bring best practices that we can find to fine tune to our needs here. Alongside Attorney G, I'm a member of the Equity Council of the State's Municipal Vulnerability Planning Program, which is comprised of environmental justice, social equity, and racial justice advocates and activists across Massachusetts. Additionally, I co-chair the MPA, the Massachusetts Public Health Association, Racial and Health Equity Committee, and chair the Community Health Needs Assessments Regional Advisory Council's Health Equity Committee. The last piece that I'm going to touch upon is that I have been successful in connecting with the Department of Public Health's Office of Equity to align this Office with practices and fine tuning them to be Springfield-specific. I have had the pleasure of connecting with Dr. David Williams and Dr. Robert Livingston. Those of you that may or may not know, Dr. David Williams is a social scientist that is renowned in the public health field. If you've ever taken an introduction to public health class and see unnatural causes, is inequality making us sick? He is most known for that work. And Dr. Livingston is a social psychologist that has done work to eradicate racism. Both of these professors are housed at Harvard. Sorry. So I have collected 160 responses. It is an ongoing effort. I'm trying to find a number that is statistically significant, which means that a number that I can use that can be helpful in generating a report and continue to inform some of the work that I'm doing. There are 14 questions. Some of them are demographical informations, but the following five questions are ones that I did want to share with you all today. The first one is, you know, what do you most like about the Springfield community? So that's looking at protective risk factors. And the second one is looking at areas that residents perceive as not protective risk factors. These were all collected in three locations, at Stone Soul Festival, the Juneteenth Court Square event, and at the McKnight Lock Party. I am hoping to continue to collect more as things start to open back up. So out of the conversations that I've had, I've had 54 conversations. 100% of them have been able to inform my work in some capacity. Eight of those individuals have been not from Springfield, and 46 of them have been from Springfield. These individuals represent various sectors, such as being associated with statewide initiatives, as is Dr. David Williams, or belonging to higher ed, or holding other racial and health equity positions as well. Some themes that came up from those conversations are the following, right? So like when I asked them, what does an equitable Springfield look like for them? Or what are some activities that they would like to see from the Office? Some of these themes came up. Feedback range from being involved in the CBDG process and looking at our city employment process, which I was able to communicate with Attorney G about, to offering citywide trainings. Although we have had successes, there were some efforts that were unsuccessful, such as Community Health Workers Health Literacy Grant, which aimed to use community health workers as interventions to address gaps that exist in Springfield residents and their perceptions around the COVID-19 vaccine. The other was the Equitable Approaches to Public Safety, which would increase our efforts with the emergency response teams that currently exist. But unfortunately, time constraints made it unavailable for us to move forward with that last initiative and the previous we were not selected. There were some other fellowships that I applied to and was unable to gain admission, whether it was due to eligibility criteria or for unknown reasons. Because of our priority for this Office to be community-centered, prioritizing these identified by residents with activities such as community dialogues, doing some data assessments are ongoing efforts that will continue to inform our work.
Thank you, Chris Mary. That was a lot of information. I didn't know all that had taken place, but I think that we interviewed, once me and you had a conversation before. So I know that you were doing that work. Yeah, you're welcome. And I didn't know about all the other things that you had going on. But I did hear about GEAR before, and I think that's awesome.
It's amazing. It has been like such a great resource. You should look into it Tracy.
Counselor Whitfield is fine. But I looked into it, but not thorough, but I will now since you brought it up. So I think that's great. I think community conversations are great. The work that you're doing with the outreach admissions. And I just didn't know you were doing all that. But do you think you can share the PowerPoint with the councilors so that those that weren't here could have understanding of what you're doing as well?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Is that okay, Commissioner?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for asking for it. That's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, wonderful presentation. You know what? I would be really interested in the surveys, in particular to see what issues are out there. I don't know if you covered it or not, but you know, anxiety can speak to this. We have really a big issue in mental health. Does that come up at all in what you're covering or doing? Because we're hoping to, you know, bridge some gaps with mental health.
Yeah, so some of the questions specifically that I asked folks if they were worried about or were interested in were access to providers that look like them, that could understand them. And so I asked certain questions, and those were included as potentials for residents to select.
Yeah, well, sounds like you have a lot of territory to cover.
What are your, I'm sorry, did you have further questions?
Not yet, but I would really like to see the surveys.
Okay.
Very interesting.
But you want to see what the survey questions are, Counselor?
Yeah, and the responses, yeah.
Can you get that information over to the council as well? You can just send it to the City Council staff, Chris Mary, and then they will send it to all of us so we can take a look. Is that okay?
No, I think it's important, Counselor Whitfield, that people know what the Office is doing.
Yes, definitely.
What else that they have had.
Definitely. Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Govan?
Thank you so much. I wasn't able to listen to the presentation because I was seeing a client, but I did want to be in this meeting. And I know that Chris Mary, I know did an amazing job. She's doing a great job. I know I met with her when she first came on, I think earlier. I don't even know what time it is anymore. It may have been last year. Billy X. Have an Office of Racial Equity, and I'm really looking forward to doing some really good work with you guys. So thank you, Commissioner, for putting the Office in place. And thank you, Chris Mary, for doing the work.
And Counselor Govan, if you'd like, you know, if you ever invite us over to have one of those community dialogues over at the Indian Orchard Neighborhood Council, please, please do let us know.
I love that. Put it on your calendar, maybe? Yes, we can have this C3 as well. So I didn't even think about that. I'm a little jealous she didn't offer it to me. No, I'm just joking.
Doing all that stuff in my community, so she knows I'm there. So Chris Mary, definitely, I'd love to have you come out. I know council members would love to hear your message and the community, I would like it.
Awesome. Counselor Allen?
Yeah, thanks. Am I muted or not? I'm not sure. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was muted. Thanks. That was a really cool presentation. A lot of stuff represented there. Do you have, I would be happy to meet with you, Chris Mary, and hear more. Some of this maybe we could meet individually on or something. But now two questions, like do you have a work plan for the year? And you don't need to share it with me yet, but do you have a work plan for the year? And where does Brother Johnny's work fit in this, what you just went through? I know that my recall of when we set up this Office, I guess it was a couple of years ago, that Brother Johnny was going to do a lot of kind of street mobilization, that sort of thing, reaching out to, you know, people who are active on the street, shall we say. And I'm not sure if I heard that in there, or you know, if that's additional. If you could just speak to that.
Commissioner, can you speak to that?
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. Thank you. So thank you for asking that question, Counselor Allen. The missions work is integrated with Chris Mary's, but not tightly. I think what we found from a policy perspective is that Chris Mary's work is really informing policy and action, as is what we do in public health. Brother Johnny's work is more on the street level, which is really his outreach is critical to outreach to hard-to-reach population. I get a report from the mission, and the mission meets with the mayor as well. So while they're integrated, their outreach efforts in terms of populations are potentially different. Brother Johnny is on the street, really working hand-in-hand or intrately with that population that needs intervention at that level. Chris Mary's work is more policy development and reaching a broader population in the city of Springfield.
Well, that's great. Yeah, I could see that there was a difference there. Maybe we could have Brother Johnny come to a meeting like this so we understand his work, because this is such important work, and it's great to hear what Chris Mary's doing. So that's it for now, Counselor, for Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I love some of the things that you've implemented or are implementing because I have the same type of role in what's Springfield. I'm like, I'm going to do that, and I'm going to do that. That's the real purpose of this meeting, so I can get some of y'all ideas and take them over here. So yeah, I'm glad to see all the things that you're doing. So I know Counselor Williams have a, President Williams have a question, but I don't know if you wanted to wait till after we hear Attorney G's presentation?
I can certainly wait, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Attorney G, you got the floor.
All right. Thank you for the invitation to join you this evening and talk about some of the work that I've been doing. As Counselor Govan said, I quite frankly lost track of time. And as I started to recount the things that I've done, I was like, oh, that was last month. And I was like, no, that was two years ago. So it was, it was good to recount some of those things. I did not create, well, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation here today, quite frankly, because it was just getting too wild and too long and too unwieldy. And so what I thought might be best is to just present some topics and then stop and then continue to present some topics. So with that, as you know, I've been in the role since January 2019, which seems like yesterday. When I first took on the role, I really wanted to take the opportunity to just stop and observe. And the reason for that is because it was a new role, number one. We had an equal employment administrator in Dan Hall that had been here for quite some time, but this role was different. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to just figure out what worked when we had the equal opportunity administrator, what worked, what didn't work, as well as what this role would do different. And so in my first couple of months, I took the opportunity to really get around the city and build connections, build connections with some of our stakeholders. And so I started with taking a look at the hiring process. What jobs did we have available? Where were we recruiting? Who, what was our ideal candidate? Who did we want? Who did we hire that didn't work out? Who did we hire that did work out? And things of that nature. And so I focused on building relationships with the obvious choices, the C3 organizations, going to those meetings, the local colleges, and connecting not only with their career services offices, but also with their student union-type offices, right? So those students who may not even be thinking about, may not even be thinking about applying for jobs right now, but maybe students that we want to recruit. Also, taking a look at what was going on in other communities, what worked and what didn't work. And so I built a pretty good relationship with the Chief Diversity Officer in Worcester to see what was working and not working there. After I worked on building those relationships, I felt that I had laid the groundwork to really start to build upon those relationships, start to really actively recruit from those organizations, as well as start to just be more involved with those organizations. I didn't want it to be a relationship where the only time they hear from me is when we have a job available. I really wanted it to be an active relationship so that if there's a student that is being counseled, for example, or just someone who needs a job, that they would send them our way, and it would be a fluid relationship, rather than a just call me when you need me type of relationship. And I think, I don't know if I mentioned, but also building relationships with organizations like Mass Hire, Fontaine Brothers, which has a lot of large construction projects in the area, things of that nature. So after I built those relationships, I then turned internally to really take a look at what we were doing internally. What was our onboarding process like? What, how were we writing our job descriptions? Where were we advertising? What were our policies and procedures? And how could we ensure that the hiring process was equitable and fair for all? And that the hiring process really did provide opportunities for everyone to get a job here. And let me just back up one second. In addition to building those relationships, I also put boots on the ground and really, similar to Chris Mary, really connected with people in the community to hear from them about what they wanted to see. How did they think, what were their thoughts about getting jobs in the city of Springfield? The hiring process? The people who worked for them? Because all of us who work for the city are really serving our 150,000-plus residents. And so I really wanted to get their feedback. And so I got their feedback, and then I turned the mirror internally and started to take a look at how we really, what our processes look like. And so I started with reviewing and revising policies. The lawyer in me could not wait to take a look at some of our internal policies and review and revise them and work with HR on doing that. And then also take Um, and then also take a look at um, our um, our interview process. Wha- what did it really look like? And so I started to sit in on interviews, just as an observer, just to see what type of questions were being asked, what we were really, um, you know, how were we vetting these candidates? And then also sort of tracking candidates and, and seeing what, uh, how long did they stay? Did they have any issues while they were here? Things of that nature. So after I did that for the first maybe six to nine months, um, I then started to implement changes. So one of the changes that I implemented was that um, I required that at least one female and at least one person of color sit in on all interviews across the city. And the reason for that is because some of the feedback that I received was that um, people didn't feel that they received a fair shot because they didn't see anyone in the room that looked like them. And so I wanted to make sure that um, that they at least had the experience of getting a fair shot at possibly getting the job. The second thing that I uh, implemented was uh, approving all questions that are asked during the interviews. And the reason for that is really to make sure that the questions were not um, inadvertently um, discriminatory in any way, but also inadvertently sort of weeding people out. For example, um, there was a, a, a department that had um, hired someone who had childcare issues. And so um, when they came to interview a replacement for that person, one of the questions that they wanted to ask was, do you have, um, do you have any children? Do you have stable childcare? I thought that that question was a little, um, I don't wanna say derogatory, that's not the word I wanna use, but um, I didn't think that it was very inclusive. And so instead, I worked with the department to change the question. What you really want to know is, are, do you have um, a plan in place to address your um, your obligations outside of work, right? That's what you really wanna know, whether that be taking care of your elderly parent or your child or things of that nature. Um, and so that's just an example of how I worked with the departments to um, formulate questions and make sure that um, make sure that they're asking the right questions. Um, so as I mentioned-
Can I jump in to that one? Cause I've never heard anyone ask about childcare. A, a lot of times when I went to the interviews, or if I went to any interview training, one thing that they said not to talk about is like your family situation and your, you know, child, your children's situation. So I don't understand that question. Um, and why it was asked in the first place? Is it the department that really need to know that?
Yeah, so um, it's a department that I think um, quite frankly, had a few people in, a few of the people that they had hired ultimately were not able to stay in the position due to childcare obligations. And so I think the department felt a little burned. Um, and so they just wanted to, you know, get in front of it and just ask the question, is really what I think it came down to. But as I said, um, you know, I think most people are well meaning when they ask these questions. I don't think anybody's waking up with an attempt to insult people, but I think that um, the, the way to do it is, is to just ask about, you know, do you have your obligations covered so that you can, you can show up for work?
Cause it seems a little discriminatory, like if I have children, I might not get hired. Um, I don't know, that's how I felt, but-
That's why I changed the question.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Walsh?
Oh, asking questions, cause I'm not sure how long I can stay on the, the meeting. How about residency? How does that weave its way in?
So I-
Does it, uh, is residency, is it tiered? Uh, so tell us how's that works?
Yes, so um, I, so one of the things that I worked on with the departments was to make sure that we get out some of those hot button topics in front, and one of those things being residency. Because residency can be a deal breaker for some applicants. So I made sure that, so I usually advise, um, for example, just last week, a department sent me some questions and question number eighteen was, we have a residency requirement. Are you able to um, to comply with that? I suggested to them that they move that conversation to the front, because if the answer is no, then you know, there's really no need to continue on with the interview. So as I'm sitting in on these interviews, I um, usually give a, an overview of our benefits that we offer from the city. And I also uh, talk to, to the applicants about residency and explain to them what residency, residency is and is not. Which is that, you know, if you're already living here, you, even though you have one year to move in, you, that does not mean that if you're living here now, that you can move out. It's, you have to stay here.
Thank you for that.
Is that your only question, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
For now? Okay, thank you. Counselor Govan?
Thank you so much. And I wasn't sure if you were done with your um, presentation or not. I didn't wanna interrupt.
No, I'm not done, but please, please ask your question.
Okay, um, I actually um, was interested in, and, and maybe you're gonna cover this later, so I don't want to maybe push forward, but I do have to leave at six for another meeting. I would ask about um, the civil service exams. And as we know, many of them are um, biased, um, you know, historically because of who wrote them, I don't know how many eighteen years ago, and who they were for, who they were written for. So is that something that you're going to be looking at? Is the civil service exams for fire, police, um, and whoever else might be coming into the city to work?
Yeah, so I can um, switch gears to, to talk about the civil service exams, particularly with um, fire and police. So one of the things that I did do is to really um, really get hands on with both of those departments um, on their recruiting efforts, because the city of Springfield is under the Beecher decree, which, not to get very far into the legal weeds, but um, we have to hire one for one. So if we hire one person of color, we hire one white person. And one person of color, then one, I'm sorry, that's not the way that we hire. Let me, let me rephrase that. Everyone is hired off of a list, and the list is organized by one person of color, one white person, one person of color, one white person. So if there is not an affirmative reason to not hire somebody, or what they call bypass, then we have to hire that person. And so the way that we are um, getting people of color on the job is um, by making sure that they are even taking the test, because if they're not taking the test, then they're not going to be able to get on this list. And we have the one for one, as I just described. And so I really worked hands on with the departments. You, before I came on, the department would, uh, I should say the city would um, post their flyers at gyms and um, also have an open house at, I think it was Central. So what I did was I connected with the Urban League of Springfield and, um, so that we could have a open house there. I also posted the flyers in um, gyms, but not the Planet Fitness Weightlifting Gym in the basketball courts, because quite frankly, that's where I saw the people of color. So um, posting, posting them at the gym at LA Fitness, going up there and talking to people there, um, things of that nature. Also connecting with the sororities and fraternities in the city, um, working on um, getting more women to apply, for sure. So that we could have a diverse candidate pool, so that we could ultimately hire from that, that diverse candidate pool. And I don't know if I've said this previously, but really my work has been shaped around this idea that we, um, if you have a diverse candidate pool, then you could get diverse candidates hired. But if you don't have the diversity in the candidate pool, um, then you can't hire them, right? So just focusing on the diversity in that candidate pool, and then also in the meantime, making sure that the process by which people are hired, are hired, um, interviewed, vetted, background checks is fair. Does that answer your question, Counselor Govan?
Yes, thank you very much. I think you were talking earlier about where post these jobs is very important, as you said. Because a lot of times, you know, um, like the other day, we were in the meeting and, and they were saying they were having a hard time finding candidates for a job, and that's one of the things that I asked, where did you post the job? Because um, a lot of people aren't always looking in the newspaper, they're, they aren't always looking at an Indeed or and, you know, so some of the um, traditional ways of finding jobs, um, I think would be better suited, like May said, right? Going to churches, going to um, you know, Boys and Girls Club, and posting things there for um, for everybody to be able to look at. So thank you very much. That did answer my question.
Yes, and I should say that I did um, e- uh, send out via email and hard copy to the local um, community centers such as, particularly related to police and fire, such as the Boys and Girls Clubs, uh, Dunbar Community Center. Just about every community center and, as well as churches and um, mosques as well.
You're greatly appreciated, cause I know that you always send the jobs um, to C three, and it's a lot of community partners just right in that structure. So um, I think you do get a, do a good job getting the word out of your postings that as they come along in the city. Counselor President Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the Attorney G, as well as uh, Chris Mary for, for joining us. I'm sorry I can't be on video today, but just had a, a question and a couple of comments. So the work that you are doing and at, you know, the office, an extension of the office, you know, of course, as the Chief Diversity Officer, I mean, this is critical work to, I think, you know, leveraging the field and filling the gap, right? So I, I really appreciate you both joining us today. And certainly as of course, the, the, the ordinance for the Chief Diversity Division, I just appreciate the implication and the fact that we're here today talking about it. So um, I, one question that I did was relative to, to benefits. And I, I know, you know, kind of creating a, a positive work environment, the culture has so much to do about offering benefits that um, kind of go beyond the pale of the typical, you know, ones that we see in a job posting, but also are a little bit more progressive and inclusive. So I was just wondering, has there, is there any leverage at the city to maybe talk about benefits? In a way that offers certain uh, you know, benefits to those who might have more, um, I guess, you know, unique circumstances, you know, as you mentioned, like someone being pregnant or things of that nature, for example. These, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
Our folks with disabilities or things of that nature, yeah.
Yeah, so it's funny that you mentioned that, because that's one of the things that I did look at, was our accessibility. So just things such as um, are we holding interviews in a location that are handicap accessible, for example? Taking a look at those things. In terms of the benefits, um, so as you know, our health insurance is through the GIC. So um, just taking a look at those, um, taking a look at what those benefits are and what they really offer. And I took the time to really learn those benefits, as well as what is available through the Employee Assistance Program. And the reason for that is because one of the, um, I found that some of the feedback that I received from employees about um, those accessibility things that you just mentioned, some of that is really, most of it was really addressed in health insurance benefits or EAP, but employees didn't know where to look, where to look for that information. And so one of the things that I did was to really get involved into employee relations, which was really about getting around to the different departments, letting employees know that I'm visible, that I'm here. Um, and also keeping my door open, so allowing employees the space and opportunity to really vent. And so, you know, employees come to my office, they vent, they may wanna talk about things. Or they may want to just ask questions that they're not comfortable asking their supervisor. Such as, you know, I'm coming back to work, um, I'm going on maternity leave, I'm coming back to work, uh, where do I pump? Things of that nature. And so um, just building those relationships so that I could learn about those, those things and then figure out if we have a benefit for it. So I worked on that. I also got around to the cities and did some um, diversity and inclusion, prohibited discrimination and sexual harassment training. And those trainings um, usually facilitate conversation. I usually have people come up to me afterwards and say, you know, you mentioned in the training this, well, this is going on, so you know, is there any assistance for me? Um, and then I'd be able to point them in the right direction. That's actually how we, um, one of the things that I'm most proud about is getting a lactation room in City Hall, which is in a space where um, women are ex- are exclusively able to pump. Um, and the reason for that is because quite frankly, I heard uh, horror stories um, from women of all sorts of uh, ages talk about, I remember when I returned from work, or when I returned from maternity leave and I had to pump in my car. Or I, you know, they worked at, um, someone was telling me that they worked at a, a big box store, I won't say the name, but they had to pump in an office with a door that didn't lock. And so just being able to provide that space for them, um, to accommodate them so that they could um, do what they need to do for their child, but also have an inclusive environment, right? Because if they're not able to do, do what they need to do for their child, then ultimately we will lose those people. Um, and then we'll be back to the diversity and inclusion issues that we had of past.
Perfect. And I'm certainly, thank you, Madam Chair, and Attorney G, I don't wanna monopolize the time, but I, I just had two other short comments. Just one that I've actually talked to the mayor about in, in relation to perhaps how this role, or the role, or you know, how there can be some meshing to, to get um, some segue on this. So the first one is the procurement, the procurement of process. Um, it's a city process, it's very convoluted, difficult to understand to the common person. And I think there's a, some potential bridging that could have, you know, take place uh, in terms of, I understand, getting notices out. Maybe creating a central hub for folks to come to, to see information, whatever that looks like. But I think that is one thing that, you know, I, I think a lot of people in the council are, are adamant about. And just a second piece is um, and, and speaking to, you know, folks at the Healing Racism, Healing Racism, Racism Institute of Pioneer Valley. You know, one thing that I mentioned was just in regards to our police officers and having familiarity to deal with the different cultures in Springfield, right? And I, I know, I don't know what their current training looks like in regards to cultural sensitivity and equity building, but you know, if we're, if there's resources to send cohorts of police officers to these type of training, so that they are more, I guess, equipped to deal with our certain population, there's a value in that. So again, I, you know, I don't know if, if your offices would be a part of that, I, you know, I see some bridging there possibly, but I just wanted to add those comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm sorry, um, Attorney G, I'm not gonna monopolize your time, cause I, I feel like you got a whole lot more to tell us, but I seen it in your eyes. Um, but one thing that I wanted to say was, um, I wanted to ask actually, so we got a lactation room, is there a room for like, the Muslim population? Or like when they need to pray during certain times on Ramadan and, and all these other type of um, um, times?
So the short answer is, um, the work around the accommodations that I've talked about has really been reactive. So a piece of advice that I received from my, um, I'll call her my colleague in Worcester, is that she went in and she implemented all these things that she really wanted to do. And ultimately what she found is that there really wasn't a need for them, or that wasn't what the employees wanted. And as she described it, it was like, you know, you ask, you know, you, you ask someone to go to the store and get you a juice, and they bring you back milk. And they brought you a drink, and that's nice, but that's not, you don't wanna drink milk, you wanna drink juice, right? And so I didn't want to do that. So what I've done is I've just implemented things just based upon what I've heard. If I have not heard um, of someone with a need, uh, but I would certainly, number one, definitely be respectful of that. And number two, we would certainly find a space to make sure that the folks had somewhere to pray during Ramadan. And I should say that that's not just for um, Muslim people at all, that's um, I believe that there's, uh, I, I believe, I'm not positive, but I believe that folks of the Jewish faith also have a time where they may need some sort of separate space. That's certainly something that we can work on, finding, locating some space for that to happen.
And I guess I ask that, cause where I work is a huge population out there, and that's a requ- that's a request. And also like getting the information out to the schools, like when these certain children cannot eat during the day, and they might be cranky, and the reason why, and making sure they have safe spaces to go and do what they need to do as youth. So also um, working i- into the school aspect, so I, I did just wanna ask you that. And I had another question, but my old age be kicking in sometimes. If I don't ask it right away, I forget, so um, I forgot what it was. And I had another question, but my old age be kicking in sometimes. If I don't ask it right away, I forget, so I forgot what it was. Yeah, I, I don't know if there's any more pressing points, because I don't want to keep you all longer than six o'clock. And plus, we got to get on this other meeting. Is there any other pressing points that you wanted to just highlight really quickly for us? I think you did a great job. Oh, I know what it was. So there's this equity tool, when it comes to, what Counselor Williams was saying, that you could use in the procurement process, and it's like a, kind of like a survey too. And if the contractors meet these requirements, they get extra points toward being chosen. So I don't know if you've heard about that, but I know the Public Health Institute, Samantha Hamilton, she, she's talked, she's been talking to me about this tool for about a year now. So I just wanted to see if it's something that maybe you would consider talking to her about and maybe trying to get that implemented in the city.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to talk to her about that. And I will just say very quickly that, because I know everyone has to go. That one of the other things I've been involved with is this Anchor Collaborative, which is essentially the large employers in the area getting together and strategizing about ways in which, ways in which we can create more diversity amongst suppliers and employees because their job opportunities, right? And so we did start to have those conversations, and Theo and I were working internally on some things, and then Theo left. So, or I should say, I went on maternity leave and I came back and Theo wasn't here. So that's sort of where, where we are. But we, we have talked about the procurement process.
Okay, good, because the procurement process needs some work. And Chris Mary put it in the chat that it is the racial health impact assessment tool. So that's exactly what I was referring to, but I think it'd be great to talk to Samantha. And then the final question, and if you guys can wrap it up in two minutes. What's the difference between the role? Like, are there, is there overlap? Does it, is there like a clear difference?
Yeah, so I think that there is a clear difference. I, I think, well, first of all, you gave me two minutes and I'm a lawyer, so I'm going to need all of my two minutes. But very quickly, I think Chris Mary can speak for herself, but I think her focus is really on the public health lens related to things, whereas I am more so focused on big picture, how to really, how to really, number one, connect the city to the city resources. So the city population to the city resources. And number two, really focusing on the workforce that we have in the city. And number three, focusing on the diversity and inclusion amongst the city. So I also talks to other people, and we're not going to get into it tonight, but talk to other people from, for example, the LGBTQ plus community about their experiences just living here in the city. How can I recruit an employee who may be of that community, but doesn't necessarily, but this is not a, an inclusive community in Springfield, right? So just talking to them about things like that, so that we can do more connections.
Look at that, you did it in a minute. Chris Mary?
And I can say that we have had some internal communications about this. There are areas where we overlap, and those are opportunities for us to collaborate in the future. In public health, what we use are social determinants of health, which are the social and economic factors that affect health. And a, a lot of my work has been to, again, be the liaison between residents and their needs as they relate to health, whether directly or indirectly, and my administration here.
Okay, look at it. You guys did a perfect job. It's six o'clock. So I just really, really thank you for your presentations. They were great. I know that one on one, if I have questions or suggestions, because I've been learning a lot too. Maybe we should all get together and talk, you know, go to lunch or something, because I got some suggestions. I got a great calendar that is fantastic that I want to show you guys to help learn about different diversity and cultures and things like that. But I think you're doing great. I definitely learned some things. I'm going to try to implement and research from you both. So thank you very much for the opportunity. Counselor Allen, Counselor Williams, any further questions?
No, this has been great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. No, this has been great. Great information in both cases. Look forward to, to further discussions and what we can do in these areas to support the work.
Definitely want to support you. So thank you. We are done. You guys enjoy your evening and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. Take care. Bye bye.